All right, I'll call the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting to Order at 6:30, 6:33. Clerk McCauser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Councillors Bordelon, Bumgarter, Cassieri, Franco, oops, yes, Jones on line, Parker and Westervelt, and Mayor Melendez, I'm not seeing Counselor McBride, can see on there, okay, so I can't see him on my screen, okay, thank you. Everyone's here then.
Thank you, so that's a quorum, will everyone please rise for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, on to recognitions, awards, and memorials, proclamation honoring Constitution Week, Counselor Parker.
Proclamation recognizing Constitution Week 2022, whereas September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, and whereas this year the President of the United States has designated September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton does hereby encourage the citizens of Groton to reaffirm the principles and ethics that the framers of the Constitution had intended in 1787 and recognize the intention was for this document to adapt societal changes in order to protect our liberties and may it further be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton duly proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23 to be Constitution Week dated at Groton, Connecticut, the 17th day of September, signed by the Mayor Juan A. Melendez Jr.
Thank you for that, Manager Burtz, just noticing that the Zoom is on recording paused. Also, can we do a sound check for those on Zoom, can you hear us?
These things are on, I think.
Recording in progress.
Counselor Jones, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Good, now, thank you.
On to proclamation to welcome USS Nautilus submarine home, Counselor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, proclamation honoring the USS Nautilus SSN 571. Whereas Friday, September 9, 2022, the US Nautilus will be welcomed back after her $36 million restoration to her permanent home at the Submarine Force Museum, Groton, Connecticut, during the kickoff celebration of the Connecticut Maritime Heritage Festival. And whereas USS Nautilus SSN 571 was the world's first operational nuclear-powered submarine and the first submarine to complete a submerged transit of the North Pole on August 3, 1958 under the command of Commander Eugene P. Wilkinson. And whereas Nautilus spent most of her career assigned to Submarine Squadron 10, SUBRON 10, at submarine base New London, Groton, tied up alongside of the well-equipped submarine tender USS Fulton. And whereas on April 9, 1979, Nautilus set out from Groton, Connecticut, on her final voyage under the command of Richard A. Riddell, reaching Mare Island Naval Shipyard of Vallejo, California on May 26, 1979, her last day underway, and decommissioned and stricken from the naval vessel register on March 3, 1980. And whereas on April 11, 1986, Nautilus opened to the public as part of the Submarine Force Library and Museum, where she now serves as a museum of submarine history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the residents of the town, does hereby welcome home USS Nautilus SSN 571 and gives thanks to the members of the United States Navy, veterans and friends and all who work to keep Nautilus functioning as a treasured museum. And be it further resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the Rear Admiral Samuel J. Cox, United States Navy retired, invites the public to enjoy the celebration during the Connecticut Maritime Heritage Festival taking place on the Thames River and in Groton and New London, September 9 to 11, 2022. Signed, Mayor of the Town of Groton.
Thank you. We have no public hearings, on to receipt of citizen petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-ct.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Thank you. Before we begin, I just briefly want to welcome the public back to the Town Hall Annex. I want to welcome the council back to the Town Hall Annex, it's been a long time coming. And I'm happy that we've reached this point in the pandemic, that we feel safe enough to come back. We have a lot of new technology here, I just want to thank Sean Greeley from GNTV for all the work he's put in the last two years. We've got a lot of new monitors, electronical chargers up here, and I just want to thank him for all the work he did to make this the best possible meeting experience for all the residents. So on to receipt of citizens' petitions, first person. I have Franca Parapalomari, followed by an Edward McCauser.
Good evening, Town of Groton Council and Town Manager John Bird. My name is Franca Parapalomini, I represent the New London NAACP. I am here tonight on behalf of a discrimination complaint that was filed with the New London NAACP by former employer, Groton Town Police Officer Nicholas Delacruz. Mr. Delacruz's complaint alleges the Groton Town Police Department subjected him to discrimination based on his race, ethnicity, medical conditions, to include his use of palative marijuana while employed as a police officer. Mr. Delacruz alleges during the time he was employed with the Groton Town Police, he was subjected to various racial slurs due to his, I'm sorry, racial slurs due to his race and ethnicity. Such comments were, "I ate your people's food last night," and they would refer to him as "Delachung." Mr. Delacruz indicated he had filed a complaint with the Groton Town HR, who did nothing. Due to their claim, he did not provide enough information. However, Mr. Delacruz indicated he was approached by the Chief of Police, who was Fazaro, who stated, "We can handle this in our house." After he filed his discrimination complaint with HR, Mr. Delacruz believes he was retaliated against. Mr. Delacruz alleges he was not rehired after several injuries he obtained while working for the Town of Groton as a police officer. He indicated he applied for disability pension. Mr. Delacruz also requested his pension contributions not be returned until he resolved the disability pension he filed with the Town of Groton. In April 2020, Mr. Delacruz applied for disability. He was denied twice, even though medical documentation, along with his medical marijuana card, was provided to support his claim for disability pension. At the time, Mr. Delacruz alleged he was again asked his pension contributions not be returned. In January 2022, and then again on May 2019, Mr. Delacruz indicated he applied for two other positions with the town and was denied employment. Mr. Delacruz alleges other officers with similar circumstances, who had injuries, were accommodated with other positions in the department to remain active as a town employee. Mr. Delacruz indicates he is employed at General Dynamics at Electric Boat as an inside mechanic, but was told he had to cash out his pension contributions by June 30, 2022, despite Mr. Delacruz repeatedly asking the town not to do so. He indicates the town cashed out his pension on June 30, 2020. Mr. Delacruz indicates he had applied for two other positions and again was denied employment. He explains he was never given the opportunity to interview. So my question tonight, I guess, would be referred and are directed to Town Manager John Bird. I would like to know, when did you receive notification that Mr. Delacruz filed a CHRO complaint against the Town of Groton? Also, did you inform Town Council of the CHRO complaint? I also would like to know if you informed Town Council of my complaint that I sent to you on September 11, 2022, in regards to the complaint I just discussed in front of Town Council. You confirmed you had received the complaint from me the next day on September 12, 2022.
One minute remaining?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, just one minute remaining.
Okay, I'm almost done. You confirmed you received the complaint, and so did you notify the Town Council of both complaints before voting on giving Chief Fazaro a raise the next day on 9/13/22? So I guess my question is, is that they were two incidents, there's a CHRO complaint filed, and then there was a filed complaint with us, the NAACP, in regards to discrimination and retaliation by Chief Fazaro and the Police Department. And so a raise, I understand, was given to Chief Fazaro two days after I filed the complaint. So I guess those are the questions I'm asking today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Ed McCauser, followed by Jim Furlong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Edward McCauser, 48 West Alderkin Avenue, here in Groton. I represent the Mystic Oral School Advocates, as you probably know, and I, you know, we've heard that the governor has terminated the contract with the state for the sale of the oral property, Mystic Oral School property, and, you know, the question then is, where does that leave us? And, you know, currently we're in the middle of a, well, we're in contract with Mr. Ressler for the development of the property, and I don't think, you know, the fact that the governor is issuing a termination of the contract ends our contractual relationship with Mr. Ressler. So I was recommending that the town renew the mediation process and then, you know, at the end of it, reach a termination decision. I think to do anything less would leave us exposed possibly to, you know, somehow this contract coming back. And I think even, you know, without the termination of the sale agreement, I think it's important that we do affirmatively act with respect to that contract because there has been no performance, you know, by Mr. Ressler, or Ressler Holmes, if you want to call it, at all. He's clearly defaulted, and, you know, and maybe this was his plan all along, but he arranged to sell the property before he ever did any development. So I think we need to, you know, go through mediation, terminate our relationship with him, and then we won't have to be concerned about ever being involved contractually with him again. The only other thing I'd like to say is, you know, it's been a long process of, I've been representing, you know, Mosa, and of course I've corresponded with you, and there've been a lot of different issues involved. But I think, you know, in the future, you know, I, my effort's going to be to find means of cooperating as much as possible with you, and, you know, to the extent that the community can help you, you know, I'd like to restore the kind of relationship that I think is, you know, most helpful, you know, a relationship of trust and cooperation. And so to the extent that there's anything that, you know, I personally could do, or any of the members of our group, I'd like to see, you know, that relationship restored. In the future, we may be dealing with this property again, and I think the community being involved will go a long way, you know, working with you to come up with the appropriate, you know, use of it. So I look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll have a Jim Furlong, followed by Valerie Levy.
Good evening, my name is Jim Furlong, I live at 57 Fishtown Lane in Groton. Citizens who have steadfastly opposed Mr. Ressler's plan for mega-development on the cliff above Mystic River were heartened by the governor's wise decision yesterday to terminate the state's agreement with Ressler Homes LLC. The prospect, the project has been a Pandora's box since it was signed November 7, 2019. Very reassuring yesterday was the unequivocal statement by Anthony Anthony, spokesman for the government, for the governor. Anthony said, and I quote, "Governor, Governor Lamont has directed the DEC-D to terminate the contract for the sale of Mystic Education Center to Ressler Homes LLC," unquote. I do feel that that's unequivocal. Lawyer McCauser knows much better than I how to make sure that a contract stays terminated, and I would advise you to look to him for details of that. And I feel that opponents of the destructive development that Ressler planned, they'll rest easier when the contract officially ends with a formal signed and stamped declaration. The sooner the better, given the twists and turns that have bedeviled us during, while dealing with this project. Second item, but related, amid the widespread campaign to derail Ressler, the Town Council Rules Committee has been drafting new council procedures that would reduce, rather than increase, the transparency of our lawmaking. The new rules, if adopted, would limit the ability of town councillors to make referrals, meaning suggestions for action, and would restrict the public's knowledge of what referrals, of which referrals are being made. The procedural language that I'm quoting is likely to come up at a council meeting, and when it does, it should be examined closely against Freedom of Information standards. The new rules could prevent our councillors from speaking out against people like Ressler and the data center salespeople, thank you.
Thank you. I have Valerie Levy, followed by Mary Ellen Furlong.
Hello, I am Valerie Levy. I live at 159 Mather Avenue in Groton at Branford Manor Apartments. We, as Branford Manor, come to the city and to the town not because of mold and not because of disrepair, it is because we're being abused by the people who run Branford Manor. And the surrounding, how do you, the surrounding housing around Branford Manor or other buildings are not experiencing the same abuse that we are experiencing. The, how do you say, the retaliation that we are experiencing is, I live in Building 18, well over a month ago, they removed the insulation, and we have a dirt foundation, and they also removed the plastic covering to the dirt. And this has been left exposed for over a month. And so they have stopped retaliating in ways of, if a person comes here and speak, and they just give them a notice to quit vacancy, that's, you know, they've stopped doing that, but they've started doing these things. Also, you know, they refuse to do repairs and other things. And surrounding neighbors are, to my understanding, when they own their own homes or condos or apartments or under other management, at least a minimum, the surrounding area is not experiencing the same abuse. And that is why Branford comes to speak, and I just really wanted to clarify that. Another thing I wanted to clarify is that when people come here and they speak and they said, they say that they have nowhere to go, I am curious, is anybody on this council, do they know how to navigate the HUD housing waiting list? Sorry. Thank you. Um, sorry. The thing is, is that in order to get into, there is other HUD housing in Groton. There is other HUD housing in the surrounding areas. Is the waiting list open? Are you able to get on to the waiting list? If you do get on to the waiting list, what are the, what are the things that you need to do in order to maintain staying on the waiting list? Besides staying on the waiting list, what is the waiting list? How long do you have? Are you able to be bumped up to the top of the waiting list? There are so many, but besides that, let's just take a hypothetical and say anybody and everybody in Branford knows how to navigate the waiting list. Let's say hypothetically, the city and the town, all the council people, know how to navigate it. When you have a family in low-income housing, living less than the paycheck because they're using other community resources in order to make ends meet, even if they're on a HUD housing waiting list, even if they say, hey, we have another apartment available to you, then you have, in from, when a person moves from one HUD complex to another HUD complex, in order for the system to process that happening, you have to be out of the system for a minimum of 24 hours. So they have to have one apartment 100% completely cleaned out and walked through. All of their possessions need to go somewhere, all of their children, all of their elderly parents, disabled people, who the heck ever, you know, single people, whether you have support or you don't have support.
One minute remaining?
Thank you. And then, and then they need to foot the bill of the relocation and, you know, getting a truck and paying the, how do you say, like the security deposit and other things, and it's a severe hardship. My daughter and I came here 10 months ago from Washington State. I've done this before, we got rid of all of our possessions, just came here with just our suitcases, and now we're in another mess. And so I wanted to clarify, what is, when people come to you and they say, "We have nowhere to go." "We don't have other options." And I truly hope that both, all, two of those clarifications, all two of those, I hope that they were helpful, and hopefully I spoke okay this time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Ellen Furlong, followed by Heather Pallady.
Good evening, my name is Mary Ellen Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane, which is in Noank Mystic and Groton. Groton has always been open to reasonable development. I know I was on wetlands for 10 years and saw many developments come here. That is development that's coming in through the front door, ready to be publicly presented to our land use commissions, wetlands, and planning and zoning. In the last few years, Groton has been dealing with severe problems that have come in through the back door in executive sessions of the Town Council, initially bypassing the scrutiny of the land use commissions. The presentations on Mystic Oral School and the data centers were arranged by the town's development staff. Most of the councillors were surprised by the very large size of these developments. The councillors were told to trust the staff and follow their recommendations. The public had no knowledge of this at the time. Additionally, the STRs were presented to the council as an issue calling for an ordinance. This is why the, these problems bypassed the town's defenses, planning and zoning and wetlands. All this would be worsened by reverting to the previous council's rules, as was voted yesterday by the present three-member Rules and Procedures Committee. Please note that this item on the agenda Please note that this item on the agenda for tonight's town council meeting was removed. With the, sorry, the, the meeting was expected to have the full council vote on it tonight. This item, under New Business, was removed sometime yesterday afternoon. Returning to the proposed rules would have the effect of muzzling the town councilors and concealing the referral system from public view. This is how we got here in the first place. These things don't happen by accident. Thank you.
Thank you. And following Robert Welt.
Hi, I'm Heather Palladie, I live at 137 Cormorant Road. Thank you for being here tonight. It's been a little while since I've been here, because I've been going to school, working two jobs, and I have a kid. But I'm just curious what's going on with the light noise ordinance pollution thing. Kelly, Kelly Paulson and I had made a petition, so I'm just, you know, wondering what's going on in regards to that. The current blanketed ordinance that the police enforce, make it so that they still determine, in their own thoughts, the law. And this allows citizens to continue to be harassed on a daily basis. And I feel like it's really disgusting, like, that they continue to be harassed on a daily basis, and the cops don't do anything to enforce anything. I'd also like to talk about these new rules, the one through five proposed, that are being considered by the Town Council Rules and Procedures Committee on their meetings, 9/28 and 10/3 of this year. These are all very questionable things, especially eliminating the response to citizens' petitions to the town council. I think we should all, like, some type of response immediately, instead of waiting, like, like emails. I just started a new job, I get tons and tons of emails, and they all get lower and lower and lower, it's like a funnel. You can only take in so much, and then it gets stuck, and then you can only filter out so much. So, how much are you actually retaining from these meetings? Maybe split it up into two meetings, maybe, you know, take more notes, pay attention a little bit better, I don't know. It just gets jammed up. So, and then number five, sounds like, a councillor can look into referring an issue to the agenda item, but it would submit the referral to the town mayor and manager exclusively. They would then survey to see if, you know, a number of councilors would allow the town mayor and manager to either campaign, or be against the agenda item outside the public purview. Yeah, this is all kind of crazy stuff. I think we should bring change to the rule to allow for more public comment and access, not less. Please make ample opportunity for taxpayers to have a say and a response. Please make ordinances so that police can carry out the laws set to prevent ongoing harassment. Thank you, and have a great night.
Robert Welt, followed by Jeffrey Richards.
Good evening, I'll be brief. My name's Robert Welt, I live at 18 Boulder Court in Mystic, and I have two things I'd like to say tonight. First, the council should direct the town manager to reopen negotiations and to cancel development agreement with Ressler Homes. Secondly, the council should not adopt the new rules being presented this evening, they are an ill-disguised attempt to stifle minority opposition. Thank you.
Jeffrey Richards, followed by Roseanne Katsowski.
This doesn't have a volume control. Nobody can hear in here, so, all right, I'll, I'll try to speak loudly then. My name is Jeffrey Richards, from 220 Cliff Street in Mystic, and I would like to greet you, the mayor, the councilors, the voters behind me, and especially those of Mystic Oral School advocates. I'd like to talk to you about the Mystic Education Center. I'm really happy about the latest events there, but I'd like to talk to you about the characteristics that I've been through in the last couple of years. First, it seemed like a protracted battle, even a war, with town staff professionals, Mr. Ressler, state officials, and even the town councillor, the highest form of government in our town. So, it's, it's been, it's been like a war. Secondly, it's kind of been like, we've been in a remake of the movie Dumb and Dumber. I won't elaborate on that, because it would take too long. The other thing is that, it seemed that the members of all of the groups I mentioned were part of a club, which I call the Pinocchio Club, because there's been so much, let me say, improper behavior. So, I'm just hoping we can all do better. Let's, let's try to do better. I'll give you a verse from the Bible about it, it's James 4:17, which says, "He who knows what is right to do, and fails to do it, for him it is sin." So what we need to do is repent, which means to turn around and go in a different direction than we've been going in town. There's people like me who are ready to help with that, others who have spoken up here. But, you know, we need to be kind to one another, too, while we're at it. But my question to you tonight, councilors, is are you willing to set right that which you have set wrong? You, including town officials, I suppose. To start on that process, I would suggest three things. The first is that you provide a succinct letter to Governor Lamont and Mr. Lehman, that the town has decided that Mr. Ressler has completely failed in his contract to keep it, because he really hasn't done much of anything. The second thing is that it's time to protect the property. What, the state, Mr. Ressler, the town can't do anything? It's ridiculous. We have plenty of electronic things, and maybe a person has to be hired as a watchman over it, time to do something. And then lastly, I really think, instead of fix, fixing new rules for the town council here, I think you need to loosen up your rules of good behavior, and get along with one another. Somebody takes five minutes, big deal. It's like, I think some of these rules you have are a disgrace, an embarrassment to democratic processes and discourse in America. We call ourselves land of the free, a democratic democracy, so let's act like it.
One minute remaining.
Be kind to one another, and good citizens all. Thank you very much.
Roseanne Katsowski, followed by Liz Reisbeck.
Good evening, Roseanne Katsowski, 24 Ann Avenue. I have three topics tonight that I would like to comment on. First, thank you, Mystic Oral School advocates and attorney Ted McCauser. Thank you. None of the events that transpired yesterday would have happened without MOSA, attorney McCauser, and years of hard work. But, it doesn't look like we're done yet. Now we need the town council to step up. It is time to terminate the development deal with Ressler. Why is that important? Because if Ressler sues the state and still has a development deal in place, it will give him an advantage. Town council, please do the right thing, and terminate the development deal with Ressler, as described by attorney McCauser's in his letter today to the town that I know you all received. This town council and the previous town council have been in an adversarial relationship with the community for too long. It is time for the town council to support the residents that they were elected to serve. Hopefully, moving forward, there will be no more secret projects cheerleading by certain town council members, as well as no undermining of town commissions by members of the town council. Also, I believe it is critically important that the town staff and the planning department that got us into this mess have no involvement in anything to do with the Mystic Oral School property in the future. If the, if the town council and the town staff had done their jobs in supporting the residents of Groton, then MOSA would never have formed, because there would have been no need. But for now, let's call this a win for the town of Groton. On another topic, regarding the new town council rules that I think will be voted on tonight, before the public has had a chance to review them, please vote no. Any changes that limit discussion, referrals, as well as response to citizens' petitions, is a suppression of freedom of speech. Why would the town council want to suppress free speech? And, why are you pushing through these new rules before the public has had an opportunity to see them? Next, regarding Branford Manor. We all heard the comments of the Branford Manor residents last week, and were affected by what they had to say. After what we heard, it seems like the only way to get the attention of the owner of Branford Manor is to eliminate the overly generous tax abatement the corporation has on the property. This is not an ordinance, it is a town council resolution, so it could be easily eliminated by a vote of the town council. Another point I would like to make, tax abatement is a made-up phrase, designed so that people will believe the meaning is the opposite of what it actually is. Tax abatement is not an abatement. It means that the taxes from one individual or corporation are paid for by the rest of the taxpayers. It does not mean the taxes are eliminated from the tax rolls. It is income redistribution. In this case, it is taking the taxes of a corporation, and having them paid for by every other taxpayer in town. I do not believe Groton should have any tax abatements for any individual or corporations for any reason. Back to my first topic. Again, thank you Mystic Oral School advocates and attorney Ted McCauser, but I'm not going to pop the champagne cork yet. I think I'll wait until after November 13th, when the actual purchase and sale agreement runs out, or when I see something official in writing from the governor. But for now, it looks like all the hard work of MOSA and attorney McCauser will result in reasonable development on the Mystic Oral School property. It looks like, for now, that the little guy won.
Liz Reisbeck, followed by Penny Miller.
Good evening, members of the town council. My name is Elizabeth Reisbeck, and I live at 81 Main Street. I'm speaking as a citizen tonight, not as co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates, as there just hasn't been time since, to discuss all that has transpired in the last 24 hours. So, it seems to me this is a moment to pause and reflect, and I really agree with the gentleman in the beautiful shirt right here, and to take a deep breath, and try to start fresh on how we do development in Groton, Connecticut. A primary lesson to be learned is that Groton's public does not want giant mega-projects dropped into our neighborhoods that are out of scale with our communities, and are environmentally harmful. This would include the two giant data centers proposed for Groton, and Ressler Homes, of course. It's not the council's job to judge what the best projects for Groton are, and try to fast-track them into our town. Rather, it's planning and zoning's job to methodically evaluate each proposal according to our existing regulations and zoning system. The fast-track has backfired, and I hope that the council has learned from this experience. Which brings me to some members' recent effort to sideline the most qualified candidate for planning and zoning, recommended by the Appointments Committee, and put, and those members proposed to put in a far less experienced person, clearly for some political reason. It was shocking to see this happen to Steve Hudesek, who has put in 30 years of volunteer expertise citing very complicated projects in Groton, and garnering the greatest respect of all his colleagues on planning and zoning, and developers, and the public as well. He is no card-carrying greener, he's a by-book guy, whose experience and thoughtfulness should not be thrown under the bus. I ask the council, what were you trying to accomplish with this switch? Please explain your rationale for that move. And finally, about the rules change. Some of your proposed rules would further diminish transparency, therefore reducing further trust in the council, trying not to go down that path. Resist the urge to make changes that prevent the flow of thought and information, both ways, between the council and the public. Not allowing council members to respond to public comment is just bad policy, don't do it. Not, not, not allowing members to present proposed agenda ideas directly to their colleagues as I read the change, but requiring such proposals to go only to the mayor and the town manager is more bad public policy. Allowing the mayor and the town manager to manipulate what comes before the council.
One minute remaining.
Have you run these changes by any good government organization to get their professional views? I suggest that you do that before you move forward. Thank you for your commitment and service to the town of Groton, and thank you for considering these thoughts and suggestions.
Penny Miller, followed by Anne Marie Foster.
Good evening, town manager Burt, and town councilors. My name is Penny Miller. I live at 56 Hancock Drive in Groton. Yesterday, we all heard that Governor Lamont has directed the Department of Economic and Community Development to terminate the contract for the sale of the Mystic Oral School. This does not let the town off the hook with respect to its own contract with Ressler Homes, otherwise known as the Development Agreement. The town still needs to default Ressler for failure to perform his obligations under the Development Agreement. The town needs to default Ressler, even if it means going to court. Ressler could, and given his history, probably will, go after the state in a lawsuit, or something, something like that. And for, and if he does, he is not, he is going to want to have the Development Agreement with the town in place. It would be one more weapon he could use against the state. It would be one more weapon he could use against the state. We don't want to take the risk that several years down the road, after lengthy legal battles between Resplur and the state, we will once again have Resplur Homes as the developer of the Mystic Oral School under that Development Agreement. Mr. Burt, for months, you have been saying your goal is to terminate the Development Agreement. I implore you and the town council to just do it. Thank you.
Anne Marie Foster followed by Jen Surff.
Good evening. I am Anne Marie Foster. I live at 15 Route 27 in Mystic, Groton side. I come before you to not repeat what a lot of people have said, but to just give you the overview. Transparency is so important in a government that can be trusted by its people. Let's remember here who the elected officials are, who the hired officials are, and who the professionals are that the hired people hire. I think the town council needs to not just put total faith and trust in our staff or in the town attorneys. I have not seen a pattern of good advice coming from the town attorneys. They often seem to have led us into trouble and try to cover it by saying, "Ooh, we might get sued." Well, you know, that seems to be happening anyway. So how about we just use some common sense and some transparency? Get the public involved where they should, through the front door as opposed to through the back door? These rule changes will do everything except that. Move the question, needs to be identified, and the definition reexamine, because I think that's getting misused. Executive sessions, I think, are being misused and as cloud cover. There are so many things that are being discussed in executive sessions that do not need to be behind those closed doors. It is ridiculous, the way this council has been hiding things, and I implore you to change it. Remember, elections count, and they're coming up again. Thank you.
Jen Surff followed by Ian Thomas.
My name is Genevieve Surff. I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. I don't want to reiterate, but I certainly concur with everything that the preceding petitioners have said. In regards to the Mystic Oral School, I think it's so important that a lesson be learned here, because we who have... I mean, really, Roseanne is the one who started all of this, but I've been working alongside her for almost two years now relentlessly on this. And I'm not, as you can see me walking over here, I'm not getting any younger. I shouldn't have to be doing this as much as I am. I shouldn't have to be losing sleep at night over things like this, because the town that I love is going down the tubes to crooked developers and things like that. I can't... Who can sleep thinking about that? No one in this town. You have got to get a little wiser politically. You're very naïve, all of you. You got voted in kind of like a... In a strange circumstance, and you didn't have a lot of experience, and you didn't have other experienced councilors on with you except for Patrice, who, I'm sorry to say I love Patrice, but ran the council as if it was one of her classrooms. You all had to toe the line, and you all had to have respect for staff. You couldn't question staff. You couldn't do this, you couldn't do that. That is not politics. That's a classroom. And you're still acting like you're all in middle school, because you're at each other's throats over this and that and the other thing. You're changing the rules because it's palpable, the anger and the jealousy and whatever else you've got in your brains that you have against each other. If I were king of the world, I would send you all to an outward-bound course for a week, and I would make sure that those of you who are the most antipathic to each other would be the ones who would have to be caught when you fall off the rock wall. I mean, this has got to stop. It's not middle school. And as Mr. Richards so wonderfully pointed out, it's time that we stop doing that. It's time that you start doing the work of politics. You can argue about issues, but you can't hate each other the way you have been and try to shut each other up and do all these things. I am really sick and tired of it. I can't stand it anymore, and I'll keep coming up here and saying that until you stop doing it. These rule changes are pretty much geared to that. The fact that you councilors could no longer answer citizens' petitions is beyond belief. We had three council sessions in the recent past where the citizens' petitions have gone on for three hours, and you're telling me that the new rule is going to be that after all the citizens have come up here and wasted three hours of their time and spoken to you from the heart about what really concerns them, that you all are now just going to sit there like sphinxes and not say anything? All in... I mean, it's astonishing. You're a council. If it's taking too much of your time, don't run again. Do us a favor. I mean, we want people here who are dedicated politicians, dedicated politicians on the town council, I know. I spend a lot of time doing stuff on the council. If you don't want to spend that time, don't run, okay? Because we want you to spend the time. That's why Portia has been the highest vote-getter in the primary that she had to run because you all threw her off the slate because she was talking too much, she was too concerned, et cetera. She was the top vote-getter in the primary, and she was the top vote-getter in the general election. If you want to be humiliated again like that, go on like you're going.
One minute remaining.
But it's just getting worse. As far as the referrals concerned, do I have a minute to talk about the referrals? I would like to say that their made-in-secret is completely ridiculous. I'm going to give you a really funny example. Say Scott Westervelt decides that he really wants the Mystic Oral School to become a dog park, and he sends that email to the town manager. And the town manager then sends... This is a new process, everybody. The town manager then sends the email to all of the councilors, and most of the councilors decide, no, this is completely frivolous. We could be making a lot of money on that Mystic Oral School. We're certainly not turking into dog parks, so most of you vote against it. Portia votes for it because she has a dog, and she thinks it'd be fun to go walk her dog there. So the two of them are for, the rest of you are against. Now, the agenda, the referral does not get put on the agenda, doesn't even show up on a referral list, because now you decided you don't want it on the referral list because your referral list is too long.
Time has expired. Thank you.
And now, the public doesn't find out about it. Roseanne, who's got a really cute dog, Casper...
Time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town...
Would also like to go use a dog park and would be incensed to know that it's not a proper referral.
Thank you.
When she finds out about it, she has to find out about it through the Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you.
I called Tom Hennig this afternoon, the Freedom of Information Education specialist, and he told me the only way you could find out referrals have been made is by every week you would have to make a Freedom of Information request on all the council emails having to do with referrals and who voted for them. Do you think, really, I want to do referrals? Oh. Oh.
Thank you.
I want to do Freedom of Information every week to find out what referrals were rejected by this council?
Thank you.
No. Stop it already, okay? We want transparency, not less.
Ian Thomas followed by Richard Dixon.
Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. I'm not going to reiterate at great length as far as what other people have said tonight. Suffice to say, default-related, default Resplur, and terminate. I feel relieved and validated on behalf of the Mystic Oral School advocates, although I'm not a member of them. I sympathize and empathize. I also, you know, the community at large. I want to thank three councilors in particular, Westervelt, Bumgarner, and Bordelon, for holding fast in the most precarious moments. Although we've received a stay of execution from the governor, this matter is far from settled, so I would align my comments with others who encourage the termination with as much haste as possible. Now, other people have spoken about the rules, so I'm not going to reiterate that too much. I'm against all of them. I would suggest that you actually add more public comment, and if you're uncomfortable with the response to citizens' petitions, you know, sorry. That's what you're... Were elected to do, was to interact with us. So that has to happen. I would encourage anyone that is excited about the Mystic Oral School outcome as it stands right now to pay attention to the Property Reuse Committee meetings that have been happening the first and third Wednesdays of every month for the past few months. There has been a lot of progress in drafting up a new RFP process, and they are now... They've always had public comment at every single meeting, and now they're also bringing in the agencies, boards, and commissions to help comment on the draft article or the draft document. So I would encourage any concerned citizen to tune into those, drop into the meeting, share your comments. David McBride is the chair, and he's been doing a great job running very fair meetings, allowing all the councilors to have their say, and incorporating those thoughts into documents in real time that the public can see projected on the screen so they can follow along at home. That's transparency. Now, what really brought me up here tonight was the situation that occurred towards the end of the meeting last week at the Committee of the Whole, and there was a moment where Council Westervelt asked to suspend the rules so that he could put forward a motion that could possibly take action on the Resplur situation. And initially, they said it would be a five-vote threshold in order to get your two-thirds of the eight councilors that were present. And then after a minute or two, Mayor Melendez comes out and says, "No, no, no, six. Six. It's got to be six." And the town manager agreed, the town attorney agreed, a couple of the councilors agreed, I heard. Everybody chime in. Six, six, six. Yep, got to be six, still six. I'm sorry, but no, that's not mathematically correct. You can change the rules on the council all you like, but you can't change the rules of math. Now, yep, okay, there we go. So if you take eight and multiply it by two-thirds, right? Yep, okay. And what you do, what you get is you get 16 divided by 3. Yep, because you got to multiply the numerator by the numerator. You remember this, right? Elementary school? Yeah. Fourth grade? Yep. All right. So then you divide 16 by 3...
One minute remaining.
And what you get is 5.3. 5.3. 5.3. You do not round up with 5.3. You round down to 5. 5 out of 8 was the two-thirds. What I find disturbing about this is that everyone went with it, all the people I mentioned, no one did the math, no one checked the facts, and no one employed elementary education. So if that's who we got working these details in these documents, I am highly concerned. If that's who we got managing the meeting and running the rules, I'm highly concerned. By the way, six eights, if you reduce it, 6 out of 8 is 3/4. Math!
Richard Dixon followed by John Goodrich.
I used to teach math, but we won't get into that. So first of all, I want to thank the councilors. I was a councillor many years ago, and I know how tough it can be when you're sitting here listening to people like myself come up and talk to you, and we've heard some people who have been rather angry about the process. So I understand the difficulties of being a councillor and the long nights that we put in, and I want to thank you all sincerely for the time you spend helping to run our government, our town, and anything that has been said tonight, I think, puts in that context. We think that you are people who are trying to do the right thing. So having said that, I don't think you always do it. (applause) And what I'm concerned about right now is how did we get to where we were, not just on the Oral School, the Resplur issue, but on others as well? Where we... And I remember when I was a town councillor, we had to rely on our staff, we had to rely on our town manager to give us information. One of the best things that happened when I was a town councillor was when somebody from the public came in and took the time to do the research that we couldn't do, because we all have jobs too, and give us a different opinion. And then we could have a dialogue about that, and that was very helpful. It wasn't always pleasant. It wasn't always something that I wanted to sit through till midnight to listen to, but it did help counterbalance the fact that we don't always get all the information from staff, because they have an agenda. We hire them because they have an agenda. I'm not saying they're not doing their job, but they look at something and they think it's good, they're going to try to promote that. And just by human nature, they're not going to give you all the bad facts. Same thing happens with our town attorneys, and that's why I'm most concerned. I read the contract for the Resplur, the town's agreement. I read it well into the process, so it was a little bit too late to say anything about it, but I did talk to a number of councilors at the time. I can't tell you the number of times I said, "That's a make-work clause for attorneys." It was not protecting our interest in many cases. I could go through it if you wanted to give me about an hour, I could pull it up, and I could point to you every time there was something that I would have told the town, I would have told the councilors, I would have told the town manager, "You don't want to sign that contract." Now, having said that, as a lawyer, I have clients that come to me. They say you want to do something. They ask me how to make it happen. Sometimes I'll tell them, "You don't want to sign that contract," but they say they really do want to sign it, because they think they're willing to take the risk that it won't go sour. And so I can then write an opinion, not doing anything unethical, but I can write an opinion that emphasizes the support. That's what happens in the process of town government on a regular basis. I'll give you one other example of how that happened, if I can be more specific. We almost lost $100 million. I think the last time I came and stood here and tried to get... I only had three minutes that time, was when we were about to start the project, the final decision, on the middle school project. I sat there, and three minutes, I had the deal undone because it was being done incorrectly. Now, at the last minute, why did I do that? I had done it to the town manager then, not Mr. Burt, a good friend of mine, frankly, but I told him that you can't do what you're doing without getting the Attorney General involved, because this was the merit property, which was the referendum that the town had done. Not just the state, but the townspeople had to be protected in that, and they chose to ignore it. The town's attorney chose to ignore it. They were notified. I notified the people who were the consultants for it. I sat there talking to him. We almost lost $100 million. I also, when I gave my three-minute speech, I'm just about out for the second part, is how to solve the problem, and they ultimately did. Fortunately, there was still time to do it. That was bad advice from the town attorney at that time. The Resplur's agreement is bad advice. Again, I'm not saying that they're bad attorneys, because they were probably told, "We really want to do this deal," and then they said, "Okay, we'll make things work." Now, the second thing, a lot of people talked about it, like about 40 seconds, transparency. The reason that many things get done correctly is because you have a dialogue with the public. That's the counter. Now, again, I'm not criticizing John Burt. I'm not criticizing our town attorney, even though it says it, because we hire them because we think they've got a vision for the town and that they're going to do a good job. So you want to try to trust them, but you have to also understand that there's a specific agenda. If the town agrees with the agenda, great, everybody's happy, but your job as town councilors is to question that, is to say, "Wait a minute, maybe there's another view." And the only way you can do that is if you have dialogues, and the rules you're proposing to change are going contrary to that. And the number of times I've heard you say, "Point of order," when it's been inappropriate just to try to muzzle the... of order," when it's been inappropriate just to try to muzzle the conversation, is wrong. So, open up, let it happen. Recognize you're going to spend late nights, my time is up. Again, thank you very much for all the time you spend. Take this criticism under advisement, but I also respect every one of you, so thank you, and I respect Mr. Burt too.
Councillor McCauser, do you want to switch to Zoom briefly? I don't have the names in front of me. Beth Tillman?
Good evening, it takes a little while to go through all the steps to get in for your meeting. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Councillors, Town Clerk, Town Manager and fellow citizens. I'm Beth Tillman of 925 River Road. As we were rejoicing over the Governor's directive to Commissioner Layman to terminate the contract with Jeffrey Restler with regard to the Mystic Educational Center, also known as the Mystic Oral School, we find at the same time the Rules and Procedures Committee was proposing new rules to limit engagement of Republican town councillors in town council meetings. We are faced once again with an evil whack-a-mole game, where each time there's a victory, we bash that little mole, we find two more have jumped up in its place, and they are setbacks to what we need to accomplish in our town government. There are proposed further attempts to erode free speech on the right of citizens and town councillors by preventing meaningful dialogue between them during and after citizens' petitions. The proposed changes also severely limit the ability of a town councillor to bring things to the agenda by a simple referral mechanism. In the proposed rule change, a referral to have an item placed off the agenda has to go through a kindergarten-type process whereby only the mayor and the town manager, who is not an elected official, can decide whether or not it can get on the agenda. How degrading to our town councillors, for the mayor can decide to set time limits on all sorts of different items at a whim. One has to ask, "Why? What are people afraid of hearing?" The most awful of all these proposed rules is the rules establishing a mechanism to move the question by a simple majority to have an immediate vote. This would apply to the Committee of the Whole and Town Council meetings. This essentially closes down the opportunity for there to be meaningful discussion on the topic and shuts down any ideas which should be aired in a discussion to reach a better decision. These proposed rule changes do not bode well for the climate in which we thought we were operating about a year ago, when the citizens opposing the Mystic Oral School project were told that they wouldn't have an opportunity to have input and representation on any RFP with the state for the sale of the Mystic Oral School. We were promised many things with these rule, proposed rules abrogate. With all these limitations proposed, it would appear that it is a pipe dream and that it will never happen in my lifetime without extreme measures that we will be included as citizens. I do not understand why the council feels that it has to control every issue before the town in such a way that citizens have no right for input. I do not know what the town councillors are posing this fear, or why they find that it is necessary to cut off meaningful dialogue with citizens and town councillors. I have gone from elation of yesterday to despair today. I ask that these rules not be passed, because it will alter even more severely the future of the town of Groton. I ask that the town council support the governor in his quest to find out what the neighbors of the Mystic Oral School would like to see happen at the property. There are rules and guidelines that have been in place for some time, a plan of conservation and development from 2016, which is as applicable today as it was when it was drafted eight years ago, and zoning regulations which were overhauled not too long ago. These clearly state that the property is RU-80,
One minute remaining.
and outlines the types of developments suitable to the surrounding residential area. Are we going to have to go through attorneys, court systems, politicians' offices to be able to resolve this in a way that is beneficial to the town and beneficial to the neighbors? After almost four years of battling since the initial Jeffrey Restler announcement of his proposal to forever alter the eastern edge of the town of Groton, we should feel some victories for the small guys. It is time for those development-at-any-cost individuals on the town council to realize that the state and the citizens of this town will not put up with this any longer. We, citizens, have the ear of the governor, the lieutenant governor, our state senator and our state representative. We have shown we can make a difference. Is this what scares you, Spitless? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
What about Mr. Brown?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
I have two items tonight. The first concerns the five rule changes being proposed to the town council. I reviewed these changes in more detail, and I'm now opposed to all of them. The fear of centralization of power has been to suppress council members from clarifying issues of importance.
Mr. Johnson, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's a little better.
Okay. A short summary of an email I've already sent to you.
Mr. Johnson, we're still having trouble hearing you. I think your microphone is, it's not working properly.
Okay, is this any better?
Slightly, but it just keeps coming out every time, every time you start talking.
Oh. Although we're not hearing the governor during the interview, it matters to the day he's still with, he's still experimenting involved, it's a high-end, high-end call.
Yeah, we still can't hear you. Sean, Mr. Greeley, is it, do you think it's his mic, or is it?
It's on his end.
Okay, yeah. It's on your end.
You said you sent an email, does somebody read it?
Yeah, I asked that we ask somebody to read it for him into the record.
I can read it.
That's perfect.
Mr. Johnson, we'll read, we'll read the email you sent into the record, will that suffice?
I'm having trouble hearing you, it's not letting me put my input.
I don't know if you can comment to him, Mr. Burt.
I've submitted my written writing, but given that, I'm sorry to be in here.
We'll read that into the record. Councillor Baumgartner?
To Town of Groton, all right, to Town of Groton Mayor, Council Manager and Clerk, submitted today, October 4, 2022. The following are my reasons for being opposed to the proposed five changes on the council procedures, which I listed on an earlier email today. One, this will lower the council limit to end discussion slash debate on any item. Any five councillors voting as a majority could decide to vote against allowing four other councillors from continuing to speak on an issue. Two, this one makes it impossible for councillors to acknowledge concerns brought forth by the public on the night of public comment. I gave this one some thought before and sent an opinion previously, which was accepted by Councillor Parker. In looking at the situation again, I think it is a mistake to delay a response to a citizen's concerns. Three, the problem here is one that I noted in a previous council meeting involving the sudden insertion proposal of a new member for the zoning commission. The consent calendar method involving notices in advance is a more stable method of dealing with personnel changes or proposals. Four, this gives the mayor too much flexibility and authority on time limits. It becomes too easy to play the game unevenly depending on personal or political interests. Five, this makes it too easy for the mayor and town manager to control or restrict an agenda or topic, as they could also guide three other councillors whether to allow or disallow referrals that they personally approve of. In this manner, some topics could end up never coming up for referral and discussion by the council. So as an overview, the folks trying to propose these changes are trying to limit what can be discussed: limit communication with citizens, loosen control on people being placed on commissions, loosen control over limits, over time limits, and centralized slash restrict control over referrals. As I stated in my previous email today on this topic and the Restler topic, I am definitely not in favor of these five changes being enacted. Again, thank you for your time, submitted by Ed Johnson of 87 Main Street, Groton, Connecticut.
Thank you. Van Brown?
Thank you. Van Brown, 925 River Road, Mystic, Town of Groton. Good evening, Mayor Melendez, councillors, Town Clerk McCauser, Town Manager Burt and fellow townspeople. I am so disappointed in what you are doing and what you are trying to become, especially you, Mayor Melendez. You promised us fairness and equality. You promised us a voice, especially for underserved people. Under the council you lead, we, the townspeople, have become the underserved people. Ah, democracy, you know, it's a pretty good system if it weren't for all those constituents who want an equal hearing and an equal voice. I'm also learning that there are town councillors who are more equal than others. You and many of the other councillors have become so caught up in political gamesmanship that you have forgotten why you sit in those chairs. By your attempts to back the Planning and Zoning Commission and to unseat commissioners, you are attempting to make planning and zoning a puppet of your development-at-any-cost-damn-the-people attitude. It looks like we have another chance to develop Mystic Oral School in a reasonable manner. The governor very much wants the next proposal to be something that the townspeople want. You seem to be working mightily against the voice of townspeople having any relevance. I remember very clearly a council member saying, "I think you're going to like what we planned for you." What arrogance. Mayor, you have let this council get out of control. It is dysfunctional. Trying to keep up with the council's action, feel like I'm babysitting my cousin's troubled child. One minute she's drawing pretty flowers, the next minute she's pouring lighter fluid on the puppy. Getting councillors trying to rem Restler Mystic River Homes down the throat of the town, even after it became clear that the townspeople did not want it. Those same people blindsided the governor by telling the committee that Groton wanted that disgustingly oversized monstrosity rather than the more modest Groton Housing Authority project. I suppose those councillors believe that, one, ethics are for the weak, and, two, rules are there to be broken. Fortunately, the townspeople put their time and money where their heart is, this town. We had great support from Senator Heather Somers and the governor's office, especially Lieutenant Governor Susan Weissowitz. We are very lucky that the governor is cancelling the sales contract, knowing that it will lead to litigation. That is a cost we do not have to bear. We need to cancel development agreement. Now, council is moving towards the very popular authoritarian model, which means any opposition needs to be muzzled. In muzzling any opposition, you muzzle the council people. We, the people, become irrelevant to the town council club. Your majority wants to use procedure as a weapon against the will of the people. You feel you know what's best for us, so you don't need to hear from us. You want to add a rule establishing a mechanism to move the question, a certain majority being sufficient to move the vote, eliminate responses to citizen position from the town council agenda, allow the appropriate reappointments recommended by the Personnel and Appointments Committee to be held under new bids, allowing the mayor to set a time limit on items that need no action, such as presentations and updates. The mayor should have the ability to extend the time needed, rather a, if I wanted your opinion, councillors and people, I would ask you for it. New referrals should be submitted to the mayor and town manager. Once referrals are received, the mayor or town manager will request support from the town council. The referral would be the support of an additional three councillors to be considered. Not one of these proposals leads towards a more open council. What is left for us as a town is to decide what we do with those people who brought us to this divisiveness, all this expense and all this damage to the name of Groton. How do we find our trust of those councillors again? If the lure of power and control is so contracted, attractive, maybe you should question if you should be part of the future of our town council and town management. We will. Now up to those of you who have been dragged into the daylight to show that you believe in doing what the people want, and that any forwarding of personal political agendas for political gain has no place in our town. What we have in Groton is precious. Once it's lost, it's lost forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Poulsen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council Members, Kelly Poulsen, 112 Laurel Wood Road. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance requiring lights to be shielded and lights to be aimed down on their property. I've had light trespassing across my property and into my home every single night, all night long, for about two years from my neighbors' houses, over five years counting the people that lived there before them. Would you want this trespassing into your home every single night? Would you want this happening to your kids, to your parents, to your friends? Their purposely light trespassing across my property into my home, and they are escalating. My diagonal neighbor has added another light, is three LED lights on a bar that go from bright to very bright whenever there is motion. He has mounted it straight out from the side of his house so that all three unshielded lights are clearly visible from my windows. The very large LED flag made up of multiple strands of LED lights has been moved from his house to the 113's house directly across the street from me. My across-the-street neighbor, 113, now has four lights on all night, every single night, the very large flag made up of multiple strands of LED lights, the two lights over the doors with excessive lumens for the function of lighting the doorknob to unlock them, and the unshielded light pole that has been trespassing into my home for five years through all my blinds. On top of the four lights on all night, every night, 113 has a double-headed excessively bright LED light over the garage, which has been with both heads aimed directly at my house instead of down to his driveway the way it is supposed to be. It is set at a very long motion center interval and is set off multiple times every night and very late at night and early in the morning. They are not blocked by any trees, contrary to what was said, for clarification, by somebody in the last town council meeting, they are not blocked by any trees. Not only have I had to deal with excessive light trespass for five years, I've had to deal with my bully neighbors thinking they can do anything they want, anytime they want, with my property. This excessive bullying and harassment needs to stop. This is my home, my property and my safety. Who is and is, who is not allowed on my property is my decision and my decision alone. They, their lights, their vehicles, their dogs, their kids, their guests, anyone affiliated with them, their mouths and their attitudes are to stay completely off my property. The neighbors have zero say over my property, and they are not to trespass on my property. They are to stay on a flat surface of the road, going by my house at all times. They are never to trespass on the curb, past the curb, on my property or my driveway. Respectfully request the police to enforce no trespassing without giving me, the property owner, a hard time, and not in any way trying to undermine who is and is not allowed on my property. This is my decision and authority alone. This is my safety. Many towns in Connecticut have light trespass and light pollution ordinances that state lights need lights need to be shielded and not to be seen above ground level from other properties. Lights are not to be aimed, are to be aimed down on their property, and no floodlights are allowed. They are aggressively floodlighting my house, and they are escalating. This is at 7:08 tonight, five lights. This is on my house all night, every single night. These are the four lights that are on all night, every single night. That big huge light flag was moved to right across the street from my house. I will show you very quickly. I'm sorry, my time is probably almost up. I just want to show you my house. So this is the four lights on all night long, coming through into my living room. That's just the four lights. That is with the light over the garage.
One minute remains.
This is the brand-new light, sticking straight out the side of my cross, diagonal across-the-street neighbor's house. This is my house at 11:42 in the morning, at night, sorry, 11:42 at night. This is my house all night, every night. I have to put a truck visor in my window, and this is the five lights on that truck visor, just to try and block the lights out of my house. Silver light visor, that's all of them reflecting on what's in my window. This is all night, every single night, and none of them are blocked by trees.
Thank you. Time has expired?
Time has expired, but lasting image. That's what I have to deal with every single night, all night long. No trees in the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you.
Is there anyone else online? Nope, all right. I have a couple more people. John Goodrich, followed by Michael Boucher. Okay. Michael Boucher, followed by Natalie Billing.
Mike Boucher, 16 Hillside Avenue. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Branford Manor residents, the tenants. There is an agreement, again, another failed agreement with the Town of Groton and a developer. The terms of the tax abatement agreement have not been met by Related, which is now running Branford Manor. It is absolutely ridiculous and cruel to be cutting Related a half a million dollar check while you all listened to those families last week. Families with single parents, families with small children, families that have a lot of difficult problems in life, disabilities, autism, and extreme financial problems. It's a slap in the face to allow this to go on. I go over there quite often. I do not understand, and John, I'm not trying to pick on you, but number-one mistake, the town had a huge responsibility with this agreement. You let the city take care of it because it's something that took place in the city. I understand your judgment there, but the city has absolutely failed the tenants of Branford Manor. Secondly, later on, you mentioned, after I filed an FOI about the quarterly reports, we don't need the quarterly reports because we have building permits. The building permits only covered a small fraction of what was going on and what should have been going on at Branford Manor during the reservations. Those quarterly building construction reports are extremely very important. Only now are we seeing the crawl spaces being cleaned out of old moldy insulation. It's inexcusable. It should have been done back in 2017. It's part of the agreement. I can go on and on and on. I was here at the last town council meeting. I spoke to you. I go into these apartments. I tried to work with the Spanish-speaking people, Spanish-speaking people only. They don't understand English. It's an extremely difficult situation for them. I asked the city to supply complaint forms in Spanish. This was over a month ago. A simple request. It's one page. It's not a whole lot of writing. I just want an official request in Spanish for these individuals. Still not done. The city is doing a minimal job. The town absolutely must step in. Why do you think you had people from Branford Manor come here and speak to you last week? Because it's not happening for them in the city. You have families living in hotels, months at a time, with children, two-room apartments, no kitchen. How do you expect a family to survive like that? As you heard earlier, these people are intimidated. They have no place else to go. They're desperate. They need your help immediately. It's absolutely inexcusable that you can enter into another agreement with the developer and do nothing. You all have great lives. Appreciate what you have, because these people are... Sorry, I can't talk. It obsesses me too much. These people are suffering. I was there today, and it's absolutely asinine. You have got to get your act together. You have a real agreement. It's not right. It's not just. It's horrible. And now you move forward with this code agreement, this, this new, these new rules of procedure where you want to cut the voice of the people down. So it's not enough to ignore people who come and speak? Now you simply don't want to talk to them at all?
Woman or man?
It's disgraceful. Please do something. Thank you.
Last time I listed, Natalie Billing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Natalie Burfoot, Billing, 15 Ashby Street, Mystic. First, thank you for your service to the community. My comments will be different than some and friendlier than some. I'm sorry to see our community engage with you with such hostility. I know most of you. You're good, decent people who care about Groton and volunteer your time. I don't think you deserve the vitriol that's sometimes directed at you, and I'm sorry you have to endure it. Considering some of the changes to the rules, it's my understanding that you won't be voting on them tonight, if that's correct. Based on my experience as a town counselor many years ago and who's watched every council in action since that time, so I've been watching for a long, long time, two of the changes you're considering would really be going back to what was the historical past practice. They shouldn't be controversial. One of them, doing appointments to boards and commissions as new business instead of as part of the consent calendar. That's the way most councils did it over the decades. You tried something different. It's not working for you, it seems, so go back and follow past practice. Deleting response to citizens' petitions. If you looked back decades, you'd see some councils had response and some did not. It's not a vital part of the meeting because it's not a time for councilors to express opinions. I hear people in the audience saying that you should, but in fact, you can't. The public may not always understand this, but you do. State law requires the topics that you're going to discuss be on the agenda. It's called freedom of information. The public has a right to know what the council would be deliberating. That's transparency. Citizens aren't limited by that, so they can come and speak to you about any issue. If your experience has been that a counselor or some councilors push the limits of what's allowed under response to citizens' petition, let it go. It's not the critical part of your meeting. There are other ways and other times to respond, but that's not it. You can't legally. You're contemplating a rule change about referrals. I'm not a fan of requiring that several councilors must request a referral. You wouldn't be the first council to do it. It's not some new and crazy idea you've come up with. Other councils have discussed it. But there are, I'm personally not a fan. I think one of the privileges of agreeing to serve in this sometimes thankless position is that if there is an item you want to have discussed at the council, you can ask for a referral. It should be done publicly at a meeting. That's been the past practice. I hope you'll continue it. Allowing the mayor to set time limits for presentations, I wouldn't put it in your rules. I think the mayor already has that authority. Mayors do that all the time. They run the meeting. Unless a majority of councilors disagree with the mayor's decision, and I emphasize a majority of councilors disagree, then the mayor has the authority to run the meeting. You don't need to put it in your rules. Lastly, the tough one. How many votes to require to move the question which ends debate on a topic and leads to a vote? Robert's Rule says two-thirds. By the way, I disagree with the gentleman who said that two-thirds of eight can be five. If it's 5.3 under the law, you have to be above 5.3. You have to round up to six.
Woman or man?
Don't round down. I'm generally a fan of Robert's Rules. I don't like to see it tinkered with. It's pretty brilliant and time-tested. So changing this gives me heartburn, but I do understand why you're considering it. You wouldn't need to if all councilors could accept that if they're not on the prevailing side, majority rules. If dissenting members who don't have enough votes to prevail are reasonable, you rarely have to move the question. It doesn't happen a lot. When I was on the Board of Ed and Council, I was often outvoted. I said my piece. I'll agree or disagree with this for this reason, but I didn't bog the meeting down. I didn't insist that debate go on and on. Is that my five limits or something else?
That's it. That's it.
That's it? Okay. So my only suggestion on that one is, take your time with that one. That one's tricky.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and for this opportunity to speak. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of my list. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Did you have a turn? Right. So there's only one, one opportunity per meeting. John Goodrich?
I apologize to put my name down. I was next door for my HCC meeting. I'm really not prepared, so I'm just going to shoot from the hip. So first of all, I want to thank all these residents here that killed the Restler project. I want to thank the councilors, Scott, Portia, Andre. You guys have been our allies, and thank you. The rest of you, I don't know what to say. You know, these guys put in time, they spent money out of their pockets to do the work you guys should have done. So I think you guys need to really take a deep look and think about that. I mean, it's not something they should have had to do. So as you guys move on, think about that. Which I'm not really totally familiar with what's going on with the rules, but I know if it's coming out of this commission, it's not good. I mean, step back, ladies and gentlemen. What have you guys accomplished since you've been elected? Restler's failed. You tried to get a mediator because you guys can't get along. That failed. Now what it looks like to the rest of us is you're going to put rules in place to box out the minority. But they're not the minority. Two of them are the number-one vote-getters in this town. So from where I sit, they're the voice of the people. So I think we're in a democratic society. Let's listen to what the people want. And I don't know how many more times the people have to come here and do your jobs for you and support the people that they elected before you guys get it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Any others who wish to speak? Just need your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, John Goodrich, 1350 River Road. I forgot to say that. You guys probably have the number right.
Hi, I'm Amady R. Scott, 543 Sandy Hollow Road. I'm an attorney in Groton. I represent over 100 people. Now I think I'm up to over 120 people from Branford Manor. I spoke a few weeks ago. I accompanied my clients at the last meeting when they were asked to sit at the table and they shared their stories with each of you. My clients have been coming before you since June, and the situation hasn't changed. In fact, it's gotten worse. I have clients who have been told by Related that it is the consensus of not only Related but regulatory agencies and elected officials that it is important to try to normalize the relocated families as best that we can by returning them to an apartment, not their own, an apartment that has been cleared by experts. They didn't ask Christina S., who has already, with her three children, including one under the age of five, who has autism and difficulty adjusting to circumstances, whether or not she wanted to make two more moves in addition to the three she has already made since June. They didn't ask Sandra F., who has come here before you before, the woman who has farmer's lung. They didn't ask her. How about her daughter who has seizures? Hasn't had a seizure in the 151 days she's been away from Branford Manor. And I've got a neurologist, her own treating neurologist, to back that up, that the mold is triggering her seizures. You already heard from Valerie Levy. You've heard in the past from Marilyn M. Her apartment has humidity, mold, peeling paint, chronic moisture problems. They want her to go back to that apartment. Well, she's recovering from an infection that developed after she sliced her skin on a nail inside of that apartment. She's on oxygen at night, and she needs chronic or continuing wound care. They want her to go back to that apartment. These are just a couple examples of what's going on and continues to go on. And if we continue to agree to abate taxes over half a million dollars this year, it's we're complicit as a town. Thank you.
Are there any others who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. That'll end seat of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns.
I have a question for the mayor.
What's your question?
I don't want a recess before response for questions because the question should be asked before the people leave.
We're not recessing.
I just want to make sure.
Response to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. In accordance with Freedom of Information Act rules, responses to citizens' petitions will be limited to asking clarifying questions with no further elaboration or opinion to be given. Councilboard along?
Can you speak up, please?
Councilboard along?
Yes, thank you. My first question is for the attorney that's representing Branford. Elected officials, I don't know if John should answer this or should she come back up and answer that. So my question is, what do they mean by elected officials? You don't know, John? No. Is she allowed to answer? Because it's a clarifying question.
The clarifying question should be... The clarifying question should be...
I thought we can ask the, it says a clarifying question to the citizens as well. Is that correct for the reading?
I just want to clarify, I don't represent Branford Manor. I represent the people who are living there.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just, I have concerns with that. John, can you look into why it's stating elected officials on that form to the attorney that's representing the Branford Manor client residence?
Could I, Attorney R. Scott, could you send me that? Could you send me that just so I could see it?
Sure.
Address it?
My other question is also for the attorney representing the residents of Branford Manor. Is it true that they are going to be homeless as of the third? It was stated that residents are being given places in-house and nowhere else to go, and a couple of residents have spoken to that. So can someone speak to that? Town mayor, town manager, or...
They've been told that as of October 6th, which is Friday, that Related will no longer be paying for their hotels. So the option is to go back to their respective apartments, go back to an alternative apartment located inside Branford Manor, or they're homeless. So...
My other question to that is, it's my understanding that some of these so-called renovated units have mold in them or had mold, and they did their basic renovation. Is that true, John, based on our reports? Do we have an exact list of what they're considered remediated units? Because my understanding is that, and I drove there, there's no, there's just dirt exposed with no insulation underneath. People are getting cold. The floors are cold, and ants are coming straight up because they stirred up along with the rats. So is it true that they're going back into possibly semi-remediated apartments? Have they been tested?
Well, had he tested, well, after the fact, I can't say for sure.
So they have not been tested?
Well, I said I can't.
So as of right now, we do not know. So we have people that are going to be homeless in several days, and we don't know. I think those are my questions. Thank you. My other one is for the town manager. NAACP spoke tonight. I've received no emails to date, not in the last year, regarding anything about this incident. Were you aware of the CHRO?
Well, that's what was on the agenda for last week that we need to.
But when did you get the CHRO?
The 19th.
Of?
September. But beyond that, both our insurance attorney and our town attorney have advised. I'm not just, I should not be...
Well, I can ask questions about it because I have a right to know. I wear these papers.
Yeah, I might not be able to answer, though.
Right. You don't have to answer. I should ask the question. I'm doing my job. So September 19th, the CHRO was filed, and you received, as it was stated tonight from the NAACP, a letter on the 8th where you acknowledged it on the 12th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I trust the dates.
Right. I do would like those emails sent to me, please, regarding that. I think, I just want to understand the track record here. None of it's been sent to us, and it's my understanding, is it not, that the process in which these should be handled, council should be made aware, even if you can't get in an executive session ahead of time, you could be informing us that there's an So we've received nothing. So if you could receive, send all those correspondence, that would be great. My other question for the town manager is regards to Restpler Homes. I have sent a referral out asking that we look at this on several occasions, and nothing's come forward. Is there a plan or a date set to get this as an agenda item to make some movements or directions? What are we going to do? We deserve for the people to know. I also would like you to address the email that went back and forth that came to council between Attorney Cody Callahan, yourself, and Mayor Melendez that was forwarded to us. Could you speak to that?
Sure. That was, the mayor and I were trying to find something where, yeah, obviously, we think it's important for state to follow proper processes. So we were trying to find some language that would not increase legal liability where we could support the Attorney McCauser's letter to say, yes, we want to see the policy, the process reviewed.
Okay. So that was the discussion after the meeting, and then at the end of the email, it states, oh, never mind, the state's doing it. But in here, the attorneys are still stating, is that correct, that there was nothing that we could do? They're telling you not to respond.
They were advising against the letter.
Correct, up until the very last minute.
However, I was in favor of taking the...
That's fine. It's neither here nor there. It's just attorney advisement. I've been told by the attorneys, too, a lot of things I should and shouldn't do. So it's a little confusing here. In response to light ordinance, is there anything else going on with that?
Well, I know the, I reached out to Chief Asaro. I don't think there's, he doesn't think there's been complaints lately made there. There's only so much they could do with what he has the ability to do. So I will check with him tomorrow.
And I think those are my only questions I have at this time. Thank you.
Councilor Westervelt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to Branford Manor and Mr. Boucher's comments, I just, I guess I didn't hear it properly, but something to do with the quarterly reports somehow were not required. Can you expound on that?
I'm sorry, you asked for me?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm sorry.
As part of the tax agreement abatement, there was supposed to be, the town and the city were to receive quarterly construction reports during the renovations of Branford Manor. Those reports were never gathered. They don't exist. I filed a FOIA request with the town and the city. Nobody can produce them. In fact, the city rudely sent me into a room. I don't know about this size, table like this, a stack of files, and said, good luck behind me again. I went through all the files. They didn't exist. I did, however, find a lot of interesting emails that I will be pursuing. And a lack, complete lack of judgment on the part of the tax and the city. Two days, two days he took me. I did it. And I've watched a lot of other people.
Thank you for that. It just, it sounded to me like somehow those were not required. That's what I was trying to get at.
No, they're required.
They are required. They just were not provided.
Simply not collected. Never asked for, never received.
So for the town manager, can you follow up with that?
Well, the Related, I don't believe they ever done, honestly. The city, of course, we... I see purpose. They inspected each unit as they were being done. We have the proof of paying, of spending all the money and what they spent, which I provided before to the council. But at this point, I don't believe they ever existed. And the city would be more likely to have it, but I don't think Mayor Hedrick has received anything. We also reached out to Groton. The housing authority was involved with the loan, and we checked with them, too, just to see if they had anything, but they didn't have anything in the file.
Okay, could we please check with the mayor of the city of Groton to make sure that they do not have those reports?
He's reported to me that he's not found them.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification. I asked for those, correct? And you said you couldn't get them. Is that correct? Are those the same documents?
I'm just saying, we don't have them.
Right. Yeah, I asked. They don't have them.
My next question is regarding Kelly Paulson. She made a comment tonight about physical trespass. Has Groton PD followed up on that? Is there any proof of that? Has anybody been...
Well, I can give you the reports, but my understanding is it's parking along the right, in the right-of-way of the road in fear of somebody stepping out onto the property, but the police didn't find any proof of that.
And nothing about...
And you're allowed to park there.
No, I do understand that. I do understand right-of-way issues. I guess my question is also about, she talks about the residents themselves and their children and their dogs trespassing on her property. Is there, are there any reports for that? And has anything been done about that?
First of all, it's really until you see it, but I think I heard of one, like, I don't know if it was a dog or a kid, but that's the only thing I remember hearing more about. I'd have to ask Chief Asaro, but...
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes. Thank you. And it's really great to see everyone back here and participating in the meeting as it should be. But I do have a clarifying question for the attorney representing the Branford Manor tenants, specifically on the grounds of default, which I wholeheartedly support. It's a long overdue. But you stated tonight that we ought to hold Related in default of the tax stabilization agreement. And it appeared to me that, it appeared to me that if residents were forced to return to their homes that are unabated, mold has been unabated, health and hazard safeties have not been addressed, or, you know, health and safety hazards have not been addressed, wouldn't that be grounds for default?
I mean, I think there are ample grounds for default. Just reading the tax incentive agreement, the title, which says, "For the Improvement of Branford Manor." If you look at the bases for agreeing to the tax incentive agreement in the first place, it is to improve the residents' lives. I mean, just go back and look at those minutes. It sets forth quite clearly what the purpose of the agreement was. And the basis for finding that they're not in compliance, it's all right there in black and white, and it's very easy to be able to look and see what the conditions are, what, you know, they even agreed to spend money on social services. They haven't. It's just, it's so cut and dried. It's, I mean, it's easy. I'd gladly take on that case as an attorney.
And has Matthew Finkel or Stephen Ross, the CEO of Related Companies, offered one of their several homes, to their own personal homes, to Branford tenants?
Oh, God, no, no, no.
Of course not. So as we've seen throughout this entire ordeal, since a resident or tenants had the confidence to come before us while they were faced with notices to quit because of retaliation, those conditions that they're, they're living in perpetually have not been corrected and have been unabated and have gotten worse. So I stand with you and certainly the Branford Manor tenants, demanding that we eliminate or, you know, hold Related in default of the tax stabilization agreement. And my question to the town manager would be, under, obviously, we're not moving forward with rules changes this evening, but what is the proper avenues that this council can take to bring that issue forward, to hold Related in default of the tax stabilization agreement?
If you could wait a few, I was going to address in my report in a few minutes.
Excellent. Excellent. My next question on the same wavelength, as far as default goes for the development agreement with Restpler Homes. What steps does our council need to take to officially hold Restpler Homes in default of the development agreement?
I haven't, you know, in fact, matter of fact, although when I get to my turn, literally five minutes ago, I finally got the notice of termination from the state to Restpler. So I'll read that when we...
State, please, if you could.
Sorry, sorry. About five minutes ago, I received the termination letter from the state to Restpler. I just got that. I'll read that. I'll read that when we get to my updates, because it wouldn't be appropriate here. But I'll forward this to our attorneys, but I think the first up is what Attorney McCauser had said, that you have to go back into mediation.
Yes.
Do you think we should tie it up, done every eye, cross everything, terminated and brought?
Certainly. And if we were to go in the direction of mediation, I would certainly hope we don't invite any other third parties to that process. But that's here, there, nor there. My last question, clarifying question, is with respect to some of the concerns we heard this evening regarding the rules. Obviously, it's not on the agenda this evening, but we heard this evening that there was past, you know, past precedent that this council, you know, operated in a certain fashion. One specific, you know, question I had was with respect to the consent calendar. When was it that the council started approving boards, appointments to boards and commissions on the consent calendar? We heard this evening that that was a change that happened in more recent years, and can we pinpoint the precise time when that change was made? And perhaps the manager may not have the answer, maybe our town clerk will. Do you know, Madam Clerk?
It was four years ago.
Four years ago. Okay. All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Councilor Borlon?
Yes, I had one more here. I forgot. I had sent an email on the 29th of last month at 4:30 PM, and it says, "Please consider this official inquiry in the background of the proposed rules." As a counselor, I only saw that a rule change was being made, but I had asked in great detail, and it went unanswered by the mayor and the town manager. I asked, who sent in each of the rules? Could we at least, could you please tell me where these rules came from, these rule changes?
Well, I think you're going to get an update on the rules in just a few minutes.
I would like now, though, to know where each of the rules came from. As a counselor...
I'll let the chair, though, answer that at the committee.
So there's, it's in the report that she just handed out a minute ago?
She's going to be discussing it when she gets a date.
All right. Well, again, my email went on, rules went on several days now, and I deserve at least an email back. If someone puts a referral in, we should know where it came from, and I got ignored. So, thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, I do have one more question. It was with respect to the complaint brought forth by the NAACP. I find it highly disturbing and unprecedented that there would be a CHRO complaint filed and our council wouldn't be notified of it. So is it true, Mr. Burt, that the town and your office was in receipt of that complaint a day before this council approved a raise for Chief Asaro?
We received the CHRO about a week later. We received the initial complaint, and I asked council not to jump to any conclusions to actually hear from our HR director and others involved. So that's all I'm going to say at this point.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes response to citizens, petitions, comments, and concerns. We'll take a 10-minute break, be back at 8:50. We'll take a 10-minute break, be back at 8:50.
which was a separate vote, but it makes it appear as if it's the same, but it really isn't.
Okay.
I can put the names in who voted which way, but I can't have a chart. It's just kind of a legislative program, sorry.
Okay.
So, the minutes will be reflected?
Oh, I only have the names, I can't have a chart.
That's fine, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Borlon?
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have those same corrections also on page 15. Page six, it says, "Councilor Franco made a motion to appoint Conrad D. to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a full member." And it said, "Three in favor of that and five opposed." I just think you should just list the people who were opposed as well. Because without going back to the whole part of the whole meeting to see who actually was in attendance for the day, you could miss if you just wanted to skip to that part. So, if you're gonna list the people who were in favor, it'd be appropriate to list the councilors who were opposed. And that's all I have right now, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, a call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously, nine in favor. Zero opposed, zero abstaining. Communications and reports.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you. We did not have a meeting this past month.
Oh, this is just your regular communication and report?
Okay, my apologies. No communications, other than it's great to be back in our old stomping grounds. I forgot how hot this lamp is above. But again, a big thank you to certainly Sean Greeley, who poured his heart and soul in making sure every nook and cranny of this building had a new feature, a new technology. And the beauty of it is Sean is so nimble, and he's so proactive in identifying grants, state grants, so that these updates are not paid for entirely through tax dollars or local property tax dollars. So, you know, we appreciate his commitment to being nimble and certainly, you know, ensuring that the public has access to our meetings. Folks who are hearing impaired, that they have the tools to be able to participate in our meetings. Certainly, the ability for folks who are not here in the building. We are streamed on GMTV and YouTube, and folks can watch our meetings in real time, have access to our meetings live. And that's so important, that we continue to have an open and transparent government. And I can tell you that Groton, I think, is far and above the curve. One of the positives is that Groton's certainly headed the curve as far as public access to meetings virtually. So, we should continue moving in that direction. And thank certainly all involved who helped finally get us back in our old stomping grounds and in our chambers. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
So, this week, I should say the last week and a half, I attended the TVCCA board meeting, and I also attended negotiations with the Board of Ed for union contracts. Thank you.
Counselor Franco? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a variety of emails during the week. One of those emails, I just would like to recognize, came from our Chief Osoro through John Burt.
weeks, I walked across the country of England along Habrian's Wall and learned a lot about Roman history and English history in the process and had a great time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride.
Thank you. The only item I have to read is due to COVID-19, the Property Reears Committee tomorrow will be held via Zoom. We're hoping to have it hybrid, but we're going to be required to have it Zoom. It'll be at 5:30 and hope to have everyone. The defender and so forth has been submitted as release. So, thank you.
Counsel Borlaun.
Thank you. I attend two city meetings over the last two Mondays. Definitely encourage anyone who lives in the city of Groton to look into the various changes that were proposed by the state, to move the election from where it stands currently in May to November and make, you know, kind of putting that all on the same playing field. Many people have spoken about it, but I just encourage you to be informed and know that that is a possibility coming down, as well as to stay also continually involved and paying attention to the, what the registrar of voters had spoke about, about the errors that had happened for 700-something residents in regards to district changes. So if you have any questions out there in the public, because election, this is our last council meeting before, is it the last council meeting before election? Let me look.
Regular counsel, what, some cows?
Yeah. This is the last public comment and stuff. So again, don't forget, we have an election coming up this November. I encourage everyone to come out. And if anyone has any trouble with where they're supposed to vote, please reach out. There was, I was told at the last meeting, I'll ask John under his communications, that they were going to send out another communication, making sure it had dual language, because the first one was not sent in dual language. I did also, I'm sorry, Betsy, do you have something to say?
No, I have a comment later.
Okay. So she was saying that the registrar stated that she would send it out in dual language. Also, I encourage everyone to come out to the Marching Band Home Show, where they, it's a big opportunity, where about 10 bands from local schools and around the state come into Groton and go to Fitch. And that is, I believe it's October 22nd. Tickets can be purchased at the gates. It's a great way to come out. Fitch won't be competing. They will perform, but it's a great way to get out and support local, you know, students and the music and enrichment of our schools. Very important. I received, obviously, the letter that was stated tonight from, oh, I attended the Rules Committee meeting, the last two as well. And those were very interesting. Encourage everyone to stay involved in that. As it was stated, I did receive the email from Ed McCauser that was, you know, came right before the meeting. I did receive a lot of communications from constituents regarding the rules changes and concerns with the lack of transparency, accountability, and equal access for all. And I can't agree more, as well as other communications for Branford Manor, Resplur, as well as data centers and many other Groton issues. I also, as I referenced tonight, I have the email here that went back and forth on the third between the mayor, the town manager, and the attorneys, where, you know, it's stating they're telling, basically in this email, that, you know, no, you know, we should not propose a letter or send anything. That was their advisement by our attorneys. And this is all dated on October 3rd. So I just think people should know about that. This was my second attempt. I asked, off record here a few minutes ago, the town manager stated that my first referral that went in last month, I guess, never made it to the Rules Committee. So I did send another one saying, "This is a referral to consider the change to the rules that allow public comment twice a month." So I just want that to be on the record that that was sent. I had sent something before, and it never seemed to make it to the rules. But other things seem to steamroll ahead of that. I also sent a letter saying, "Please consider this an official inquiry into the background and the proposed rule changes discussed." On Wednesday, the 28th, I asked, you know, who and how and what councilors had made the referrals. It went unanswered. John apologized, said that he might have missed that, and he would respond. Juan did not say anything. The other thing that I have here is, I just want to make sure, that's my second attempt here. This is 8/3, where I said I'm making a referral to request that we add a second opportunity for citizens' petitions to each, to occur each month. And that was sent on 8/3. It went unanswered. Nothing. I also sent in, this is a referral I sent on the 29th, my referral requesting that we schedule an action item to vote on whether or not the council wants to terminate the Gotts Bates HFA in observance of qualifying termination events listed in the HFA, namely, the number of financial and legal troubles that have emerged with the firm over the past months. It hasn't made it to the agenda yet. That was sent on 9/29, because we still have that open agreement that has not went through the proper channels to end. So I am asking the questions. This is the other thing, because I just think it should be done above board. I also sent something, this is my referral action item with the utmost urgency available agenda that the council vote on whether to direct the town manager, the town attorney, to issue a letter declaring related affordable to be in default of a tax abatement stabilization agreement. I sent that out on 9/29, and haven't heard anything back from that. Hasn't made it to the agenda. I had sent something prior to that, and it has not made it to the agenda. I'm also going to be, my request tonight, I'm going to make a verbal referral tonight. I will send it in an email as well, in light of the announcement from the Governor's Office regarding termination of Resplur purchase and sale agreement, making a referral that we set up an action item at the next agenda, on the next agenda, where we can discuss and vote on the subject of termination of the development agreement. And, you know, obviously, basically just getting this on to the agenda, and what level or which way we should go. I know Attorney McCauser had submitted his recommendations, but we need to move quickly, and this should be something that's on there. So I'm verbally stating it for the record. I have it here typed, if you'd like it, for the minutes. And I think also in the minutes, the correspondence emails between the town manager and the attorneys, since we're paying for that, should be part of the record. So I will submit these to be part of the record. Thank you.
Just to be clear, all your referrals are on our open agenda items list. They're on the last page.
In response to that, not all of them made it there yet. So, thank you.
The ones that we received before this was printed are right here. Counsel Westphal.
Thank you. What's that, Herb? I've gotten tons of emails and everything regarding Branford Manor, as well as the Mystic Educational Center and what the status of that was. There was some confusion with some of our constituents last week regarding how that was processed, since the purchase and sale agreement was not explicitly requested to be on there, just an update. And so they wanted to know how we did not get to where we could discuss the developers agreement, which I'll take up later tonight. Also, the Rules Committee, there's a lot of confusion, less confusion now, but a lot of people have questions and concerns about the transparency regarding the latest rules changes. Thank you.
Counsel Conseri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. On September 28th and October 3rd, I attended the two Town Council Rules and Procedures Committee meetings. I have received various communications regarding Branford Manor, the Rules Committee, Mystic Education Center, and updates, Gotts Bates, the Town Manager Report, the MAT Awards for the Town of Groton Officers, specific information from a Branford Manor resident regarding her communications, the Elks Officer of the Year, and an email about usage of schools for sports teams, which I forwarded to the Board of Education, and an invite to the Millwood Creek Ribbing Cutting on October 23rd at 9:30, put on by Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, I had the great pleasure to speak at the National Honor Society induction at Ross O'Tech. I just want to thank Ross O'Tech, Sandy Jamison, who's a teacher there, for inviting me to do that. It's the most fun I've had in quite a while. And it was just an honor to meet, you know, the leaders of Groton, who will be here in the future, hopefully soon, because they were amazing. And it was just great fun to meet them, speak to them. Hopefully, I said something that could, that they could take with them. But other than that, I have nothing. Counsel Borlaun.
I also forgot to add, thank you, Counsel Conseri, for bringing up the Elks invite. Forgot about that, as well as the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Dinner coming up. That benefits, I think, last year, it was four Groton students that, you know, receive upwards of $25,000 each. It's, that's fine, 20 or 25. I heard it might be moving. That's why I said it, but thank you. And it varies depending. Not everyone gets the same amount necessarily. So, either way, no matter what the amount is, 20 or 25,000, it's a great opportunity for the community to support. I think the tickets are about $75, if I'm correct. The date, I don't have it in front of me, and I heard that they still had tickets. John, do you have the date in front of you?
October 20th. October 20th.
Okay, October 20th. And if you need any information regarding it, they can reach out to the town, John, on how to get tickets, or how do you?
Yeah, sure.
It, I think it's a great opportunity for a night out to celebrate our students for their excellence and hard work. Also, I wanted to add, it is October. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I did send a proclamation, a request, so hopefully we'll have something soon. I encourage all folks in our community to do their due diligence and make sure they're getting, you know, proper testing and access to good quality health care. And it's definitely something that affects our community in large numbers. Thank you.
Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting, Counsel Baumgartner.
Yes, just quickly regarding the referral on the tax stabilization agreement. So I made that referral back in, with Counsel Borlaun, stated on May 25th. When was this placed on the open agendas item? Was it just placed on the open agendas item?
I don't think so. I think Lisa, sorry, I think Lisa updated it with the new request from Counsel Borlaun. The other one has been on there, though.
Okay. All right. So typically, when their referrals are made, does it include the name, or, because I'm just having a hard time following, like, whenever a counselor makes a referral, is it automatically placed on this open agenda? I know typically, the last few months, we haven't gone over the open agenda items, so maybe that's why.
We didn't in the past, but Lisa started doing that some months ago.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that things are not being left off after referrals are made. Thank you.
Clerk of the RTM.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The RTM met last month, September 14th, where they did a bit of business and also elected, the first district, RTM caucus elected Sheila Perry to fill a vacancy. We still have one vacancy, a Democrat for Amy Whitehouse's position. The next meeting will be October 12th at Senior Center, excuse me, Thrive 55 Plus Living Center, formerly known as Senior Center. We do have a vacancy in the third district. Unfortunately, we have to report that Representative Lee White passed away on the 24th of September. Let's see, the next meeting, I said it's the 12th, and they have three items on their agenda. Unless, yeah, well, they will have three items on their agenda.
Thank you. Clerk of the Council.
Clerk of the Council, I have one item that seems to have not been mentioned is the 50th anniversary of Oceanology, which the 13th is the invitation at Avery Point. I will be going, so I'll report on that for you. Ted Bromley, the head of elections for the Secretary of State's office, responded to an email that requests for information regarding the Voting Rights Act that requires 5%, oh, wow, I'll get a free feedback, 5% language minority requirement and calculation is made by the Department of Justice. So if a town has 5% of their population is a non-English speaking portion, then they're required, the town or the city is required to, whatever the language is, provide election material in that language. So we don't have any, any close to that percentage in our town. We're not on the list. We'd know if we were on the list. But the council did ask a few years ago, I think it was three now, that our ballots be dual ling, it's not a problem at all, because it isn't. But we don't have any, any applications and never have any applications sent in by non-English speaking individuals. So, I mean, all of our applications have Spanish and English. That's what the Secretary of State does, just to avoid any problem for any of us that have that 5%, you know. So, but I really, I really feel that we don't want to confuse people anymore by saying, "We're not complying by law," because we are complying by law. Okay? And it's dangerous to suggest that we're not. Saying that, I will take direction from the whole body, not from one counselor.
Town Manager.
I have a question.
No, there's no response to that.
Town Manager.
I can ask a question, correct?
Town Manager has the floor.
Good evening. A few of the smaller things, not that they're small, but Finance Director search, the Finance Director position has been posted for the second time, so hopefully we'll have some luck with that. Public Works, we've pulled a permit with DOT to, where the submarine sign is on the highway. It's covered by tree branches right now. You can't, it's hard to see it until you write on it. So we, we're going to clear that out, so people can see it. We're signing, I think we just signed the, Public Works signed the architect agreement for the community center renovation plan, so that's progressing. Mystic Ed Center, I'll see if our attorneys are available, at least one of them are available next week. But if you're interested, I can read the letter from David Lehman that we just received. It's not a long one. Go one second here. And it's dated October 4th. Dear Jeffrey, the State of Connecticut, acting through the Commissioner of the Department of Economic and Community Development, the state, entered into a purchase and sales agreement as amended the agreement with Resplur Homes LLC on November 13th, 2019, for certain real property known as the Mystic Oral School in Groton, Connecticut, referenced as the property. That agreement references Public Act 15-193 as authority for DECD to sell the property. Under Section 3C of this act, DECD's authority is limited to selling properties that are permitted cleaned sites. The property does not comply with the statutory requirements. Therefore, DECD will be unable to meet the conditions precedent to the sale of the property, under Section 7 of the agreement. As a result, this letter is to provide you with the required 10-day notice that the state is terminating the agreement. The termination shall take effect on October 14th, 2022, in accordance with the agreement, after which all rights and obligations of the parties under the agreement shall be terminated. Sincerely yours, David Lehman. So that's the, and I've sent that onto the council and RTM, so people have it. So I'll see if we can get an attorney here to talk about that. And I do agree, the first step is to enter back into mediation. And then Branford Manor, Steve Mansfield sent me an update this afternoon. Steve reports, he gave a little summary of past action. On August 18th, he received 27 complaints from Attorney R. Scott. He received a few more shortly thereafter. They've inspected 29 units from those complaints so far, and they've issued 16 violation notices, and nine are, more violations are coming. And it depends on when the date of the issuance is, but they have, I believe it's 30 days to make repair, to actually fix the issues. I think the first set of them went out on, somewhere around 9/8, I think 10/8 is when they're due for having completed some repairs. Legally, created a community health team. I believe there's four staff people. They're going to all unvisited units in the complex, so every unit, to see if they want to report any health nuisances or concerns. They are, the paperwork they're bringing is in Spanish, and they're bringing and they're bringing Spanish speakers with them to speak with people. And then the city, to date from what I've received, have issued 29 violations, and the way that works is they have 10 days to submit a written timetable for, for how they're going to repair them. I had sent an email to the, forwarded an email to the council yesterday, just on latest dialogue with related, and I'm, and it's a council decision, I am getting to that point where I think they need to be put into, into default. I'm not seeing the effort I would want to see out of them, so, we'll try to get that on the agenda, I did, and I think I emailed the council that I've directed the town attorney to start drafting that, just so you have something to consider, so, that's in the works.
Council Board along.
Um, thank you, I just want to swing back to the town clerk, I was referring to the, when Chris.
This is, this is town manager.
I can still respond to the town clerk at the end.
We're on the town manager part of the agenda, questions are for the town manager.
That's not how we've ever done it before, I'm just a little confused. I'll ask the town manager then, can you tell me what, reference to the town clerk, the 5%, what I was referring to is when she came to us and said, I think it was District 4, I think Chris Connolly had brought to light that there was a whole bunch of voters, 700 and something, that were giving the wrong voting location, and when I asked, did they also send it in Spanish, she said no, and she said she would do that. Are you referring to something else different that is in addition to that, I was just a little confused, because I agree, we have the bilingual ballot, but what I was referring to is the notice that went out to the voters to tell them that their voting district was done in error, I was just asking that we send it out in dual language.
Right.
So is this a new thing that is being discussed, or?
I, I think the clerks brought that up in the past, that's kind of separate from this. We don't, we don't have someone to translate on staff, so I sent the Kristen Venditti, voter registrar, the, I have a company that I received some information from not long ago that does that type of work, including their price schedule, what all they do, so I forwarded that to her, she said she'd take a look, but I've not received anything yet.
So, at the last meeting, it was stated that she would send out it again with dual language, is that what I have, correct on the records?
I, I know she was looking at it, and I said, as soon as I get it, I'll post it, but I did send her, she said she was looking, going to look through the information I sent her.
Okay, thank you.
That's actually just to add on, something I'd like to do in future budgets is to have some funds available to go through, you know, to have things translated as we need them, especially, my understanding is if it's an official form, like a complaint form, you have to be cert, have a certain certification, or else there could be legal liability, so if you had an actual, like, you know, the city complaint form, that you actually have to have somebody certified that translates that, to make sure there's no issue with the translation, but I'd like to have that ability to get that done as I need it.
I could agree with that, and I think it's a great method, we use it in the medical field, and it has to be someone who's medically certified, so there's numbers that we, as a town, can apply for, and then that way, that person certified, let it be legal, medical, whatever the issue is, financial, you call in, and it's a three-way call, and they translate everything, so I think that's great, thank you.
Committee reports, I have nothing from committee, the whole, personal appointments, Chair Baumgartner.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you, Rules, Chair Parker.
The Town Council Rules and Committee, Rules and Procedures Committee held special meetings on September 28, 2022, and October 3, 2022, to discuss various proposed rules. The Rules Committee did vote on and recommend the following changes to the rules of procedure, to govern the 33rd Town Council. So, first item was to add the following language to Rule 8D as new number six, as well as to Rules 10J, a motion may, may be made in second and after two rounds of speaking to call the question and end debate by simple majority. So, just to give everyone a heads up, that is on page five, Rule D, which is under the debates decorum, in debate and limits of debate. Four of these items were brought forth through the ma, through the mayor's office, through the mayor, I did state that during the meetings that we had, I reiterated that, and the last referral was from myself, which I did state at the meeting, both meetings, both times. The first meeting was held, we started it off, and we reassessed the meeting to continue our discussions and to look up further information to make sure we were doing everything correctly. Our second item was to remove Rule 7A6. So, Rule 7A6, which was responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns, because we were not following FOI information rules regarding responses to citizens' petitions, because we're only supposed to be asking clarifying questions with no further elaboration or opinion to be given, which that also was stated during the meeting. Number three was to remove personnel appointments from the consent calendar from Rule 7A7B and from, from 7B2. Because we had a meeting, personnel appointments presented something and moved it to the agenda without suspending the rules, so they moved it from the consent calendar to, to make it a new business, it was suggested that we put it on permanently. That was the discussion we had, so we all decided, most of our committee things, we have to vote on in person, so we moved that to a new agenda item, which I believe Councillor Baumgartner stated had thanked Mr. The Mayor for moving it to new business. Number four was add the following language to Rule 5 as Item H, the mayor can set time limits on presentations or updates. Previous councils, we've only had half hour to 45 minutes on presentations, and we were just going back to what it used to be, which is Rule 5, we can go back there, but it's in conjunction with every rule that we have here, which refers back to each thing, so he is in charge of the meeting and can set time limits, for instance, we have five minutes to speak for the public, three minutes for us to speak, with that ones in our rules, but five minutes for the public. The last referral was my referral, we have open agenda items, and to streamline, not everybody gets the information when they send out individually for a referral request. This way, everyone sees what's going on. Coming from the mayor, so there's no, not the mayor, from the town manager, so there's no discussion, that everyone will see what the intent is of the councillor for the agenda item. Once it's been decided by two, who are in support of the referral, to other councillors, to the town manager, it will be placed on the agenda item by the mayor, to whatever committee it needs to be proposed at. This way, everyone has an opportunity to see what the referral is, because there are several referrals on our list that does not have further explanation, but they're placed on. So, this is in order to streamline information, all councils will get the information at the same time, and it's presented, and they can review everything, and that's my recommendation, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The first rule change regarding the, removing five members to move the question. So, is that after two rounds of debate have occurred, you can't do it before two rounds of debate have occurred?
No, because our rules currently state that we all have two turns, so we were being, trying to be consistent with what the rules were already.
So this would only affect if additional amendments were made, so like, if someone made an additional amendment, and we had a third, fourth round, and someone made another amendment, the only way you could move the question is if after two rounds of speaking was done, no matter what, you can't move the question before two rounds of speaking.
Correct, which is what we do currently.
Okay.
We have two rounds, unless they want to have additional discussion about it.
Thank you. For the second rule, in my referral, did I express the reason that I wanted to pass this, was because we, I have had many FOIA problems and complaints, and was there any other reason given for why I wanted to take that off the agenda?
No, just that there was FOIA complaints.
Okay. Third rule, personal appointments from consent calendar, is it, is there any other action item from a committee that goes to the consent calendar rather than on to new business?
Not from a committee, no, sir.
Okay, there's no other, that doesn't happen at any other time?
Point of information, we're kind of engaging now in a colloquy here, and.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, FOIA states that we cannot engage, if, if, this should be a standing agenda item, it's very clear, if we're going to have discussion about this, we should discuss it under the agenda item on the, on the agenda.
Thank you. Councilor Parker, regarding the fourth rule, does the mayor already have the power to do this, and will this just be putting that to paper?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Board along.
I guess I'm a little concerned if you sent all four of those, that you had to restate it to ask what your referral said, so, I, I'm a little confused. I think this is only hurting the council, I'm really concerned by the change, there's council members up here who stated, when we went back to this rule after the last council, that they had stated that they did not want to have to get other councillors' approval. We are elected at large, and I'm concerned, has this been checked through the FOI compliance? Because as elected official, if I wanted to say, I would like to paint every, I want to have a party on the streets every November 1st for no reason, I have a right by the body, the community that elected me, to make that as a referral, and then you guys can just vote it down. To have to go around behind the scenes and say, hey, McBride, or, um, Westerville, McBride, Jones, can you guys support this referral? That's not doing the people's work. What's the point of being up here, I'm better off being under citizens' petitions. I just don't understand why it's so important to get two other councillors, so I have to work a deal behind the scenes, hey, Westerville, Cassieri, hello. Some of the councillors, to be quite honest, don't even talk to me after the last election, so how am I supposed to get support for a couple items? Second, it's going to be sent behind the scenes, so if I email it, and it doesn't get the support, it goes into cyberspace. Nobody in the community knows, is that clear? How this is written, nobody in the community will know what a councillor sent in.
Council Board along.
Is that correct? So you send it into the town manager, and he waits quietly while I run around and rattle the cage of two other councillors to get support, and then he says, bingo, you got two people, let's move forward, you made it to an agenda item. That's not democracy.
Chair Parker, are you going to answer, or would you like me to?
Well, whoever made the referral should answer.
Thank you.
Are you discussing, are you discussing the report?
Yes, that, that, first of all, that is discussion, but to answer your question, this is how we did it under the last council, you can make the, you can make the referral in public, it goes to the manager or the mayor, and last council, we had it, where you needed to support, support from two other councillors to get it onto our list here.
And it failed.
On your last page.
And it failed.
What failed?
The process, that's why we moved it back.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Mr. Mayor, I'm very concerned that we're violating FOIA right now, as we're actively discussing something that is not on the agenda.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And, and my other question then is, why did it come off the agenda, so we could have had the discussion tonight?
Okay, so.
Per our rules, it can only be presented tonight, and then voted upon at the next town council meeting, which is not till November 1st.
Right, because the two meetings I watched, it was very clear by Councillor Jones that, you know, he said, oh, we need this ready for the 4th, that was the plan, and it was on the agenda, and then it came off yesterday. So, that's, that's a little concerning, I'm not in support of these, so.
Hold on, wait.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
There is questioning of councillors' motives.
So.
It was stated at the meeting.
Point of order.
Okay. The, the, the rules were put onto the agenda, it was pointed out that we couldn't put them on the agenda, because it happened too soon before the meeting, so it was taken off the agenda and moved to the appropriate meeting, which is next month, I don't, I don't see any cause for concern.
Well, it was, it's a concern to me, because my question is, we didn't even have these in our possession, it was already on the agenda, we didn't have this, right?
That's why it's not on the agenda.
Right.
That's why it's moved to next month, thank you.
Yeah, it's concerning the process in which I have.
That, we followed the process, Public Safety Chair McBride.
Uh, no additional.
Thank you.
No additional report. No, no meeting, sound our report, thanks.
No meeting, no report, thank you. Onto new business. DODIA World Language Advancement and Readiness Program.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, before we begin this item, I just have to disclose that I am now an employee of Groton Public Schools.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Okay, and I will be recusing myself, because this is financial in nature, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, do we have to get up, if we recuse ourselves, is that the new rule, I just want to make sure I don't violate it? Because before, we just stayed up here, so if it's changed, I just want to make sure I follow.
Councillors can do whatever they're comfortable with.
Okay, so it's not required, thank you.
Recommend a resolution approving the Groton Public Schools DODIA grants, whereas Groton Public Schools were awarded a $1 million Department of Defense grant to accept the DODIA World Language Advancement and Readiness Program grant, and whereas with the support from the DODIA, Groton Public Schools will improve and expand its world language program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Superintendent of Schools, Susan Austin, to accept the 2022 DODIA W L A R P grant in the amount of $1 million, and to execute any necessary paperwork to implement the grant, referred to the RTM 6.5.3. So move.
Second, Board along.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Board along. We have the superintendent here, we got a presentation on this at the Cow, I don't know if you want to say anything briefly, or we could just move straight to questions.
Did anyone have any questions?
Council Board along.
Uh, no, thank you, I just want to thank you for this, this is something, I know back when you were the Assistant Superintendent, you know, you stated how you were a military dependent, and my, both my boys are very interested in the program, and it was something that was drawing us to New London, because they had the program, and it was a no-brainer that the town of Groton being a, the submarine capital, would make sense to have a naval ROTC program here in our town, to give students the enrichment and exposure to make choices at an early stage before committing. So, I just want to thank you for this grant, I had a meeting with the school yesterday, I know Mrs. Lambert as well, is one of our math, middle school math teachers, her and I, together, back in the day when the boys both were there, we, we asked, and asked, and asked, and I've come before the Board of Ed under many occasions to ask about this, so, I, I just, it makes me very excited, the meeting yesterday I had with Tom Mariglino and some of the other schools, it's, I'm excited to report that it looks like my son will finally get the chance to be part of that club by the close of this year, and they met with him today, actually, and the start of the program, he'll get one full year if the curriculum is passed in a timely fashion, which I hope the students, he, he will be part of the first.
God, we've got the board right on it, so, it will.
Awesome, he has a chance to be a part of the first ROTC class, so I'm very excited tonight, Groton should be proud, and I look forward to seeing where this goes, thank you so much for your hard work.
I also want to just say that world language sometimes doesn't get the attention it deserves, and in a district like ours, where I have some schools that are 25% students who are Spanish-speaking, we have quite a few languages spoken across all of our schools, and, but the Spanish is really one of the key languages, we have students who come in to. We have students who come in to school, speaking fluent Spanish, and we've designed courses that are Spanish for the native speakers, so they learn to read and write in Spanish, and they can earn a seal of biliteracy kind of off the bat. And so this is really to enhance and develop, and have more students receive this thing called the Seal of Biliteracy, which could equate to as many as nine credits at Southern Connecticut for their languages. So we really want to enhance it. We want to start at the elementary and enhance in the middle school, so that they go from novice, intermediate, to kind of expert by the time they graduate and receive this seal. So I couldn't be more excited about this grant.
Yeah, I also think it's really important to acknowledge Tom Mariglino, who is a guidance counselor at Fitch, who also went, recently joined the military, and, you know, is also duly serving and working at the school. And when I look at all the documents, I saw his name in there overwhelmingly. And so having that inside track and his knowledge really helped, you know, have that on board. And I think his, the teacher that's going to be teaching the classes, Mr. Henk, is it Henkel? Henkel?
Yeah. Terry.
And he's very knowledgeable in this, so I'm, again, thank you for-
Well, the two of them have teamed up with our neighbors in New London, and I think they're even planning a field experience to bring our club there pretty soon. So we're going to get this up and at 'em.
Thank you. And I look forward to maybe a ceremony when we have our first, you know, group of kids go through this program. It would be great to have-
I think so, too.
A lot of, a lot of schools will do a kickoff, and when they hand out the uniforms and get those kids fully indoctrinated into the program, it'd be great to have that as an opening thing for Groton Public Schools. So, thank you.
Seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously eight, in favor, zero opposed. Does that count as an abstention?
I just want to thank you all very much. I know it's a late night tonight. I appreciate all of your, your volunteer hours, and I think we're onward to the RTM.
Thank you. Eight oppose, zero, eight in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Onto Groton Ambulance Lease 2022. I recommend a motion accepting a resolution approving a lease extension with Groton Ambulance, whereas the town of Groton and Groton Ambulance Association Incorporated entered into a renewal of lease agreement in 2018 for the purpose of Groton Ambulance operating an ambulance service on real property owned by the town at 217 Newton Road, Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut, and whereas the lease was initially set to expire on September 30th, 2021, and whereas the lease was extended a second time to September 30th, 2022, and whereas the parties mutually, and the parties mutually desired to renew the 2018 lease and to extend the term through September 30th, 2023, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves a lease extension for a property at 217 Newtown Road for a term ending September 30th, 2025, with Groton Ambulance Association Incorporated with a yearly lease amount of $1. So moved.
Second, Board along?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Board along. Seeing no hands, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously nine, in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I'd like to make a motion.
What's your motion?
That we, we have to suspend the rules to vote tonight to, in regards to Resspler.
I think, I think you have to make a motion to sus-
Suspend the rules.
People in the, yeah, they, they can correct me. You've got to make a motion to suspend the rules to add it to the agenda.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add it to the agenda that we discuss Resspler.
Second.
Okay. Is this two-thirds? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel McBride, are you opposed?
McBride opposes.
Okay. Abstentions? All right. Right, so that'll fail. Three in favor, Westerville. Board along, Baumgartner. Six oppose, zero abstaining. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, Cassieri.
We already made a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions carries five in favor, four oppose, McBride, Westerville, Baumgartner, Board along, zero abstaining. We adjourned at 9:47.